All right, let me get my agenda up. Windows open to my computer here. All right. Hey, it's April. Wow. All right. So it is Monday, April 4th, 2022, 5:30 PM. I call this regular meeting of the permanent municipal building committee of town of Leger to order. This meeting is being held by via Zoom. At the end of the meeting, we can talk about returning to meeting in person again. The only reason I'm a little hesitant is we still got some folks that are joining the meeting that could be billing us hourly to drive across the state for the meeting. So we might wait one more month. But either way, let's go ahead and begin the meeting with a roll call. I'll be myself, Steve Jeskowicz Chair.
Jerry Tyminski member. Wayne Donaldson Board of Education.
George, you're muted.
George Jose member. Thank you. Steve Munger Board of
Stephen June Silver Petroselli.
Dan Hessler ONG.
I think Kate is out there. I thought I saw her.
Yep, Kate Pama Herb. I think I spoke at the same time as somebody else.
Gotcha. All right. I think we've accounted for everyone. All right. Excellent. All right. Let me get back onto the agenda again. And here, some window problems on the computer. Okay, next item on the agenda is we have two sets of me, meeting minutes here because we did not have enough votes to approve the minutes, but at this point here, the minutes for 22 February are carryover from our previous meeting. So I move that we accept the meeting minutes for 22 February 2022 as written.
I'll second that.
Say goodbye, Mr. Tyminski. Is there any session? If not, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes of 22 February, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
George Tyminski, I.
Kate Pama Herb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Jose, I.
It's that the eyes have it and the meeting minutes are approved. All right. Next, we have the meeting minutes of the 7 March 2022 meeting that are attached to your agenda. I I did have one recommended changes I make the motion. Item number eight talks about discussion of possible action on a vote on BT Lindsay. It starts out the chairman Jeskowitz stated the work is 85% complete. That was actually Wayne Donaldson that said the work was 85% complete. Wayne, I believe that's correct.
That is correct.
Right. So with with that, other than that, I moved that we accept the minutes with that correction as written. I wasn't sure who made that second. Was it George? Okay. Okay, I mean, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion on the meeting minutes? For the comments, with that, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes, signify by saying your name and I, Steve Jeskowicz, I.
Steve, can I? I wasn't there. Can I? So I'll stay.
That's fine. We have enough votes without you. So that's good, Jerry.
Kate Pama Herb, I.
George Jose, I.
Yeah, I wasn't there either. According to the minutes, I thought I was, but.
I'm taking a look. I don't.
I don't usually miss. I don't know how I missed it.
Lisa, does that show up on your records there?
Double checking right now. So I have a, I have it blank. I don't have, I usually either check or absent. Did you come maybe come in late?
I don't remember, to be honest with you. That was a real month last month.
I mean, I can go back and listen to the listen to the the video if you want me to.
Yeah, I don't see anything on his. I don't see any votes where he had it where he left out of the top of the minutes. All right. So the yes votes on that were Kate, myself, George, and and Jerry, you abstain, correct?
Yep, right.
All right. So I do not have enough votes to approve that as it is, Jerry, unless you decide to vote.
Okay, I'll, I'll. Yeah.
If we want to research Steve's attendance, we can do that by watching the thing and just push, we'll just push to the next meeting. That's not a problem. So I'd like to go ahead and withdraw the motion then to, and we'll table the meeting minutes. So that's good for everyone.
Blind what me?
Lisa, do we have to vote to table that once the motion's made? Or can I just withdraw my motion?
No, you can just withdraw the motion. That's fine.
That's been tabled. Okay. All right, let me get those off of the plate here. All right, back to our agenda here. Okay, tonight we got a couple of things to take care of. I have no. Well, first of all, I'm looking at who's online here. I don't think we have any citizens that have dialed in. The only number I don't recognize as a face is John Marshall.
That's John, yeah.
So we have no citizens comments. I'll just pause for a couple of seconds here to make sure there are none. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and back on the rest of the meeting. Okay, informational items, I have no informational items to pass to you. However, I am going to ask that, and please remind me on this, we do need to amend the agenda at the end and add a few items. We did receive and they were forwarded to you back two bids for the for the audit data collection project, and we'll talk about those as we go with their on, but the they're not on the agenda for tonight and we will add them in as an item at the end of the Leger School Improvement Project. Okay, with that, we're on item number seven here. We're in the final closeout here. I'd like to go ahead and some of you may recognize items that are on the agenda here. What I'd like to do here is, Dan, you had sent an email off changing the change order, if that's the right term, dealing with the pads in the in the Gallup Hill School. Since you instituted that, why don't you go ahead and start, Dan Hetzler? Explain us what's going on with that. And then I know Steve June, at least in an email that he did not agree with that. So I wanted to get some feedback there. So go ahead, Dan.
So the background here is the item on the punch list was a was a comment that was from a meeting held onsite, I believe, Mike Brennan, Wayne, and then a prior meeting to that was was Matt Belcher and and Sam Kilpatrick. And the issue was that, as I understood it, that the gym equipment was not installed aligned properly, and and that caused the the issue to be raised and the ultimate outcome of the meeting was to proceed with additional padding at the platform at the stage at Gallup Hill. So when I asked you to approve the PCO a couple of meetings ago, it was to take those funds for the pads that ONG went out and procured away from the trade contractor responsible for the gym equipment. In my subsequent closeout with that trade, I went through the documents and I didn't find the backup there to backcharge the trade. Essentially, the submittal was submitted for the location and I went out in the field and I, as Bill, verified that the equipment was installed per plan. So I know that, you know, the pads were requested and because the backstop is relatively close to the platform. I don't disagree with the cost. I just moved the cost from a backcharge to the trade to the contingency to the CM contingency. So that's why I wrote it. And then subsequent to that, as I had to redo the amount of contingency that we give back instead of 340 347,000. Sorry, change that number to, you know, change it by the three grand.
Okay, so Steve June, I did see an email from you. Were you ever disagreeing with that? Did you want to go ahead and weigh in on that?
Yes, I was fine with the math. It was this whole thing started with the line striping of the gymnasium. We never received a sale for it. That I do agree, Dan, that yes, there were dimensions in that submittal. That was for the backboard. That was not for the line striping. Installing one of those backboards. It can be adjusted. It's not a fixed dimension. And it was agreed that instead of ONG paying $50,000, and that price was from Matt, that we would go ahead and put in padding in lieu of taking out that whole flooring for $50,000. So yes, I do agree. There was a dimension in there for the backboard, but the backboard was adjustable. And there were no submittals for the lines, how far back from the stage. Because that's this whole issue is the closeness to the stage. So that's why I disagreed with it. There was, ONG was going to pay for that padding in lieu of paying $50,000 to rip up the flooring. It is a small amount. It is $3,100. So.
Yeah, and I'll just comment that we do have a significant contingency that we are returning back to the town. And then the other comment I would make is that the line striping was installed. Again, I checked the line striping against the contract documents. It followed the contract documents. But that's, you know, to Steve's comment, I didn't, didn't go back and look for line striping submission.
In the specs.
Oh, I would always, I would expect that it's in the spec and and that it was not, you know, that that goes back on, you know, I'd have to go back and and verify who owned the line striping.
All right. So before, you know, two, two things kind of conflicting back and forth here. First of all, we need to understand why, why we have, you know, additional cost here. And, you know, one part of me says I don't want to hold out closing out the project for $3,000 debate, but at the same time, the real question goes back to and and Dan, I know we changed a lot of people along the way and things like that on on your end. But the question remains, you know, if this had been a design issue that had to be rectified in the field because it didn't work out, we dealt with hundreds of thousands of dollars of those kinds of things. And those things that just don't work out in the field, the way they were designed, especially when you're retrofitting buildings, you know, we you know, paid for many of those costs because, you know, the architects had to go back and do a redesign and they didn't charge us anything more. But the trades are building to the spec and the plan. So, you know, back to the issue of the line, you know, the, you know, doing the floor and the exorbitant cost to change all that, the real question is, and I'll ask Steve you for your input and then Dan for your input is, you know, whose fault is this?
I'm going to say ONG. There was no line striping submittal sent in as per the specs. The line striping would base the backboard, which is adjustable to what it needs to be.
All right. And and Dan, do we have any of, were they required by the to submit, submittal on this?
I did not backcheck the line striping. Typically, it is in the book that it would be a submittal. So I've, I have confidence to say that it would be a required submittal. My comment would be that that the striping that's shown on the contract drawings identifies the location of the equipment as well as as where the striping goes. When you're talking about the striping that is at the platform end of the of the basketball court, the striping aligns with the backboard to go to have an overrun would put the line striping even closer to the platform. And then I did also reach out to Mike Brennan, asking him if he recalled the conversation and whether it was an agreement that this would come out of an ONG fund. Or, you know, was it a contingency? And Mike Brennan had no recollection. He, he, he rec, he recalled the conversation. He recalled the meeting. But he didn't presume that it was going to come out of ONG's general conditions. But instead, that it was a CM contingency item.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't think in the time that we've been in the committee here, we've had a whole lot of things moving to contingency that we disagreed with along the way. But in this particular case, especially with the architects, you know, saying, you know, Steve, would this have got, would that submittal have gone to SPA?
Yes, yes, it would have.
And you guys you have no record of it, correct?
Correct.
All right, Dan, Dan, what are, what are our options here? Because I don't think we put too much to your general conditions whatsoever over this $65 million project.
Well, the option here is I produce paperwork that moves the money out of the CM contingency, reducing the amount of CM contingency back to the town from 350,000 to 347,000. The committee has the option of approving that as a CM contingency draw. The paperwork has been submitted to you. You have all three PCOs at your, you know, at your disposal to approve tonight.
And these, these are the last three change orders required to close out the project and get a final invoice?
Yes.
All right, I got some.
I'm sorry, excuse, excuse me, Steve. The the one for the the 230R, I do not have a signed one from Steve June.
That's correct.
He signed the other two, but he did not sign that one.
That's, that's correct. And realistically, we can't approve 231R unless we approve 230 or 232, because those two are tied back to 230R. So and trust me, I almost hate moving this thing. I'd like to get some comments from other members of the committee on this one. First of all, Steve June, what's, what's your? I want to go back to you for a minute here is, you know, we generally do not, we need the architect approval to do one thing or the other. I'm a little bit mindful of every month that we continue to not close out the project over a $3,000 item. And I understand you guys, you're being, you're doing the job we're paying you to do. Don't get me wrong. I'd like to get comments or questions to anyone, either Steve or Dan, from any members of the committee. I do recognize that most of you were probably not on the committee when this was done, but and Wayne, you, this was done before you taken over. So.
It was done. Yeah, the meeting was when I was there.
Oh, you were, you were there then?
Yeah, me, myself and the superintendent were there.
Okay, Wayne, do you want to weigh in on this a little bit before your recollection on this before we get any more comments from the voting members of the committee?
Yeah, there was a meeting. Sam had conveyed to me that the line striping was not in the right location. It was put too close to the stage and attempt to make it a regulation court. And we weren't supposedly looking for a regulation because it was a, you know, an elementary school gymnasium. And they created a safety issue because people dunking into the basket could come down on the edges of the stage. So we did make with Mike Brennan, I think Matt was there. And we ended up with the agreement that they would add some padding to the top of the stage. There was no discussion at that point of where the payment would come from. So beyond that, that's basically all I can tell you.
Okay, thanks, Wayne. Any members of the committee have questions for Steve June or for Dan or for Wayne? I'd like to kind of get your thoughts on the this $3,000 versus, I can't give you a dollar value what it costs us every month that we continue to wait. And if we have to meet again, do a quick meeting in a, in a week to redo these change orders, we could do that. But I'd like to get some feedback from some members of the committee. Or questions, comments?
Yeah, this is Kate. I almost want to say this was the meeting that we had at Gallup Hill School. I do remember at least looking at it while we were on a site tour. I, I do recall us having all these conversations and what I'm having a hard time understanding is if we had enough information at the time to feel confident putting it back to the trades, how did we get to that decision? We wouldn't have done that lightly.
Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't there. So I'm not sure, you know, the why the assumption was it would go to the trade. I thought it was an equipment location problem. And that's why when I presented this the first time, I went back to that trade. The line striping is a different trade. It's your flooring contractor. His contract's been closed out. You know, it really comes back down to, as Steve June mentions, that, you know, that there was a submission required. The submission wasn't made. And then my response comment is the line striping was installed in accordance in exactly the way it was drawn on the contract drawings.
But there were no dimensions on the drawings, though. On the contract drawings. So they scaled the drawing, which they're not supposed to do.
Right, page six of the of the PDF that's attached to the meeting minutes. Those look like dimensioned.
Right. And Kate, I was at that same meeting that you were at in the gym, and I do recall us looking at the gym and looking at the distances and talking about padding there. And we actually, I think, flipped one of the pads in the meeting to talk about how it would be done differently. But I also believe that the outcome of that meeting was that we were going to be good customers and not ask them to rip out or move anything. And we would accept the padding there, which would give us a slightly bigger basketball court. And there was a little bit of give that we were accepting that, but not that it was going to come out of our contingency fund. And I realize it's only $3,100, but the fact of the matter is that I think that, you know, it's not unreasonable to ask that ONG absorb that from their their general conditions, considering that the, you know, that's the consensus of those that were there on what was to be done. And there is some question as to whether the proper submittals were done, which would have been ONG's responsibility to ensure we're done part of the work being done. So I, I think that is the more effective course of action. Like, before, Dan, you say anything, I'd like to just get any other comments. And Kate, is that basically aligned with what you were saying?
Yes, yeah, I, I agree with you. I mean, we, we all stood there and came to the same conclusion. If we're going to change the story now and it's not something that we had any control over, I don't, I just don't think that it is fair to the schools or the taxpayers of Leger to have to absorb that cost. I mean, we, there was ample opportunity to make those measurements at the time before a decision was made. And we all agreed to doing it in a way that didn't come back to the cost going against Leger.
Right. And I believe that we were picking the most efficient way to do it. It didn't require either the floor to be ripped up or the hoop to be moved. That that would be the simplest solution to move forward and we would get used to the gym quicker, etc. So Steve June, is, is that, to you, sound reasonable that that charge would be in this, at this stage in the game, become an ONG charge?
Yes, I believe so. Yes. And unfortunately, I wasn't there for the meeting.
So understand, any other members of the committee, I mean, Steve, all you can do, Steve June, is look at the, all the email chain related to this and look for those submittals and any discussions. Any other members of the committee have any comments or questions on this? And if not, then I'll let Dan chime back in.
No, just real quick, Steve Munger, I, I wasn't there, of course, but just listening to everybody. I, I was gonna say the same thing you said, Steve. It sounded to me, I had dealt with Navy contracts. I was gonna say what you said. I don't think we should absorb the cost if there was a chance. If it wasn't our mistake from the beginning, if I'm understanding this right, and they had a chance to deal with it prior to doing the actual striping. I, I don't think we should absorb it as the as the town of Leger.
Well, and I just want to stress that this is different than some of the other things that we had throughout the project where like I said, the design called for something, but in the field, it wasn't going to work out the way originally designed. We had quite a few of those things that came up along the way. And we had to do some redesign and we paid all the costs for those things. But in this particular case, I think this is consensus, the committee seems to be that that the change order that we already approved in our last meeting, am I correct, on this?
Well, the change order that you approved two meetings ago took the cost away from the fellow that installed the gym equipment. So in any rate, I have to produce a new PCO or a new COR, whether it's against the CM contingency or against the ONG funds.
Okay, Dan, you're, I'm looking for your comments back on this. Obviously, it appears the committee, first of all, we don't have it approved by the architect change order. Two, this is holding things up. Is that unreasonable to ask ONG to take that from general conditions?
It's unfortunate. I'm sure that there's a few around here that would disagree with you. As far as, you know, there's agreed, if there's a submittal requirement, which I presume there is, I just checked and I did not see where a shop drawing for the line striping was provided. So in fairness to Steve and and, you know, you know, truth be told, this is, that's an oversight that was made by the field team. And so if, if, you know, because our and Beak's contract is closed out already, we would take those funds out of ONG's general conditions.
Okay, so with, with that said, that would make items 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5 tabled for tonight. However, Dan, how long will it take for you to get those changes back?
I'll write them tomorrow, Steve. I can get them back to Steve June by end of day tomorrow.
Okay, as soon as I see that they're signed by Steve June, I'll, I'll schedule a special meeting just to vote on this to get this done so that at our next regular meeting, we can get a final invoice.
Right. And with those figures, I could produce the final invoice that'll get it out to everyone. So they have an opportunity to review it prior to our next meeting.
That, that's the goal. And that the, you know, the goal is that our meeting a month from now in May, that we will be able to finally have that final closeout. All right. Dan, excuse me, Wayne, did you have any other comment on this or is that closed?
No, as far as I'm concerned, it's closed.
Okay, all right. Do we have, I think we still have a few lingering, I hate to use the word punchless items, but items that are still, we're waiting on parts on a couple of things. Wayne, what are the couple of things that we have left? Not counting anything to do with HVAC that we're doing outside the contract.
We have the TVs in the pre, pre K and K rooms that the blocking in the walls was not installed. I believe, though I haven't gotten absolute final confirmation from Dan, that we're on schedule to do that during the April break. We'll be pulling the TVs off the walls. They're going to take the brackets off, open the walls, install the blocking, replace it, paint it, get the brackets back up, and then we'll rehang the TVs. So we stand there on that. That's scheduled. We're still waiting for all the paperwork for the Gallup Hill. We've got none of the owner's manual books or warranty information for Gallup Hill yet. We are still waiting for the training videos that were done at all the training sessions. And that's a Gallup Hill and Ellen S. We're waiting for the wall to be repaired from the water damage coming through the AC unit. I don't know if the Dan's going to try and do that over the April break or not, but I haven't gotten a com, confirmed date on that. And he's still working on the leak in the auditorium, which we believe is coming from the AC unit. They were supposed to do a water test a week or so ago, but we got canceled because of weather. We got that real cold spell. So I'm waiting for that to be rescheduled. That's pretty much except for the HVAC, the what's left open.
All right, and we'll talk about the separate. We're, we're going to add a couple of agenda items here with concurrence to the committee. All right. All right, Dan, do you have any comments on those things that, as far as timeframe? And what is the likelihood of those all being taken care of, Dan, prior to our final bill in May?
It's good, Steve. We are on, we do have confirmation, Wayne, that, that I am bringing in drywall and paint over the April break. And you nailed it. We're doing both the, you know, the first floor at Gallup and and repairing that section of third floor of middle school. So those are confirmed. The other item is the ladder enclosure at Leger, Leger Middle School. He's on the docket for Friday after the early release. That's this Friday, the eighth, at one o'clock.
Okay, good.
I am personally going through what was left for an ONM manual for Gallup Hill. And I'm producing that myself, you know, once I go through and finish the proof that that Brittany, who was the project engineer, had put that together. And this Friday, the eighth, is the water test for for seeing if we can nail down where that water is getting in at the Leger Middle Schools auditorium.
Okay, good.
So we're going to do both. We're going to start at Leger Middle School and then they'll go over to Gallup to look at those two units.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, this month should wrap up the, the one punch item over at Leger Middle School and then these warranty items in the documentation items that that Wayne mentioned.
All right, that's good. All right, we've got a couple of invoices for Silver Petrocelli Associates to pay for before we get into some adding items to the to the meeting agenda. Item 7.6 are payment of invoices. We have an AIA application 220146 from Silver Petrocelli Associates in accordance with their time materials contract for $399 to Leger Middle School. And I think Steve June, one Um, and I think Steve June, once we get final closeout, I think we'll probably almost be done with S P and A. Um, once we pay the final invoice, would that be correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Um, so I've got A I A application twenty two zero one four six, the amount of three hundred ninety nine dollars, and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Timinsky, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, uh say by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica, it's I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
Kate, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Jose, I.
Hey, with that, the eyes have it and that invoice is approved. Uh, item seven point eight, motion approve A I A application two two zero one four seven from Self interest selling Associates. Dated one March uh in the amount of six hundred and thirty one dollars and seventy five cents for the Gallup Hill School. That is uh invoices in order and I move that we make payment.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Timinsky. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the invoice, say by saying your name and I, Steve Jessica, it's I.
Jerry Tominski, I.
It's a her, bye.
Steve Munger, I.
George Jose, I.
With that, the eyes have it. All right, um, I think we can go through the items. We'll just uh append at the end here. Uh, Dan, you and Steve are welcome to stay on if you like. Um, um, we're going outside your uh realm here, but um. I'm just looking at the items we have. We're still under payment of invoices and school under number seven. So this is actually update seven point one. We don't have to amend the agenda. Um, Dan, did you want to give us an overview of what's going on with the uh heat and fan uh Ledger Middle School as our interim? Not interim, but our permanent fix for the problem in those two classrooms?
The two classrooms at Gallup Hill, Steve?
I'm sorry, did I say Dan? I meant I meant Wayne. My apologies.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. Um, I did get quotes, the uh, I'll start with the fan. Um, the the firm quote I got, uh, I've got a verbal quote of like sixty thousand dollars for the fan. Uh, the written quote I got was fifty thousand and plus a little bit of change. Um, they're both suggesting that rather than install a separate exhaust fan. That we just tie into the existing um feed fan for the um the boilers. And when the temperature in that room gets up with a simple thermostat, that we turn on that fan to bring in more fresh air. Um, and then either put a louver in the door or something that'll that'll, you know, a small vent that'll vent that excess air when it comes in.
Is that gonna be a less expensive and less complicated?
Yeah, they're talking a few thousand dollars instead of, you know, fifty.
Okay, uh, just real quick, while Steve June is still on the line here, since the 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 engineer record kind of came up with those two fixes, the. The heat in the one room and the fan, um, is that something that you think we should kick back to uh Marty at S P A just to let him know? Make sure that there's no draconian reason we shouldn't do that?
Yes, yes, I was I was gonna ask about that because he designed it, so I think he'd be the best person to review it.
Because we we've been in there at all different times and that room is not really that warm. Um, it's comfortable, slightly warmer than the hall, maybe a couple of degrees. Uh, but you're not talking eighty, ninety degrees in there. Um, you're probably talking seventy. Um, so I'm not sure how much impact that's really having on the room above.
Okay, um, but yeah, I think you should send that back. Um, and we're gonna talk about the other, the other item is. The uh, the proposal was for hydraulic heat to add in hot water in that room. I know there's some concern by the occupants in that room. That um the teachers, obviously, um, that uh that by putting that heat, that location. The only wall space they have for any bookshelves, anything would be lost. So I know that you were looking at potentially using uh electric radiant heat panels in the ceiling?
That's correct. Um, I did that, uh, and I did run that by Marty. Uh, he said, yeah, we can go ahead and do that. He has sent me over or is going to send me over the uh sizes of panels that are needed. To supplant the radiant heat he had designed. Um, yeah, the problem is that there's multiple bookshelves in that room. And you've got one wall that has the cubbies where they put their coats and boots. One wall that has all the cabinetry and the other wall has all the uh smart board, uh whiteboards and all that. So that is really the only wall they can put their bookshelves on and that is totally taken up with those bookshelves.
That that all makes sense and I'm I'll I'll bet in the end the radiant electric heat will cost less to maintain and less install.
Yeah, well, definitely on the install. We're talking ten to eleven thousand is the quotes to put the radiant panel uh the baseboard in. Uh, about three to four thousand to put the radiant panels on the ceiling.
Well, the the difference in uh, you know, hey, we're try- we're trying to go to uh. It's electric then and that's greener than burning oil in the boiler, right?
Yep, correct.
There you go. That'll make a lot of people happy. All right, uh, yeah, just continue to keep us informed of that. You should be seeing, we should be seeing quotes at a future meeting for the two uh items. Yep, great. All right, uh, and I think, do you have anything else on the under the school improvement projects? Before we move on to these other projects?
No, no.
All right, moving on to room uh regular number eight, discussion possible action on summer projects. Uh, do you have anything more to share with us at this point, Wayne? It's uh now April. I know you're still getting your list together.
Um, basically, what I've got is um a couple of items that come to my attention. Um, and since we're not doing the classrooms this year, uh, we would like to move forward. Uh, with the classrooms of the wood shop and the metal shop. Uh, and rehab those, those that require the smart boards that we're having problems getting. Um, so I've got a proposal that I sent you, I think Lisa sent it out to you, uh proposed budget. Thousand five hundred. Um, the biggest item on there is event hoods. Currently, they are doing welding and they are doing plasma cutting and there are no vents over these areas. Uh, so um, that's not a good thing. Um, so to uh and that uh the hundred and three, that accounted to like sixty two thousand. Um, so um, that's what we're trying to correct those problems. Um, we have a. On the agenda for the finance committee meeting. Um, to meet with them because this is not really the intent of what the funds for the classrooms were does, were allocated for. Uh, so we just want to make the town council aware and get their blessing to go ahead with this. As part of the renovations for this year instead of the standard, what we consider a standard classroom.
Wayne, yes.
Yep.
Um, that item on the vent hoods and things, obviously, that's a school facilities, uh, you know. Uh, Kate, you and Steve Munger have that. Uh, when you guys determine that that's needed, it sounds like it really is and. Um, and I'm I'm kind of surprised there's no code issue here that we have, we're not in compliance with or something, but. Um, the if you expeditiously get that through, you tell us what you need and then we'll make sure that it gets as a project to the P M B C. But the need for it, that's a, that's, you know, the uh Board of Ed finance people. Uh, facilities, I'm sorry, Board of Ed facilities people to uh say, hey, we need that and uh. You know, that sounds to me like a very good and uh important use of those funds.
The board, this one, go ahead, Kate.
Yeah, so just to make sure it's clear to everybody, um, Wayne did already bring this to Board of Ed Facilities and Board of Ed Finance. It passed both. Um, we discussed it at at all of our meetings actually last week, so or to whenever our last set of board meetings were. Um, so on the Board of Ed side, these have already been reviewed, discussed and approved. Um, they need to go to town finance and that's just to be transparent. Um, we have approval for the funding, but it was originally proposed as um funding for a block of classrooms to be refreshed. But like Wayne said, they can't get the smart boards that are part of that project, so um. This seemed like a a good alternative project to move forward with and we just want to be transparent with the the change in which classrooms are being um upgraded.
Excellent. Um, thanks, Kate. And uh, so Wayne, you expect that you'll have a. I presume you're getting bids already on the uh on the hoods and things?
Yeah, I've gotten, I've gotten per- pretty firm pricing on this stuff. Um, so, you know, I'm comfortable with the pricing. Um, what I would request is that the um. That the P M B C approve this to go forward pending the town finance committee and and council approval. Um, so I can get this, you know, going because, you know, lead times on everything now are so far out.
Definitely. Do you have anything that you can put together for if we have a special meeting in a week that we can vote on that? Or one one week from now when we vote on the uh, the uh, the three other A I A applications we have to vote on?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if you can do that, that would be great.
Okay.
Uh, and then we can, so Lisa, those will be two items for that special meeting in about a week.
Yep, that's fine. That's not a problem. Um, the other thing for summer work is the uh auditorium. The bids came in. Um, the total work, including the A V and the um. The floor and the curtains came out to four hundred and sixty eight thousand dollars. Um, the allocated amount was four hundred and forty thousand uh that was allocated, so we have a on the uh. Or I'd like, if you would kindly notify um the finance committee. Um, of this and that I'll gladly go to the meeting uh to see if we can get the additional twenty eight thousand out of the C N R. Uh, Board of Ed C N R. Uh, the funds are there. It's just a matter of getting them to okay it over.
Uh, Wayne, which finance committee is that? That's town finance or is that?
That's town finance, Town Council Finance Committee.
Okay, um, do you have that in a summary email that you can kick uh so we can get that onto the agenda?
Yep, I'll send it over to you. So if you can forward that on to get it on the agenda, I'll be more than happy to go to the meeting. I'm not, you know, concerned about that.
Well, that's fine. Send that to Lisa as well with the backup that she needs and then you would be ready um to get that uh uh under award with the extra funds, right?
Correct.
There's no, is there, is there any small area that we had like an option or something that we could trim back and try to stay within the funding or is that just too hard with the package?
That's gonna be really difficult to stay within the funding. Um, I believe we're gonna be able to cut a little bit out. Um, I did talk to the the main vendor. There's no room on the flooring. Uh, the main vendor. Fifty three, three thousand, I think, on the flooring. Uh, the other quote that came in was like eighty thousand on the flooring.
Uh, right, well, hey, Wayne, let me just sit over for a second. Kate or Steve? I presume that uh Board of Ed, uh, you Board of Ed's gonna be comfortable using this additional funds to get this done. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's the best answer from both of you. All right, so Wayne, send that to me. Send a carbon Lisa as well. We get that out to finance. And hopefully we can uh get that awarded uh at our next regular meeting.
Okay, now, the other thing is that basically there's only one bid, so as part of that, we're gonna also ask for a uh. Um, allotment to go with the sole bidder.
Okay, so we need a bid waiver as well. Um, so that would go in the same request?
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, and all right, that's summer projects. Um, anything more on that?
No, no.
It uh, we're, do you have any additional invoices on B M S or is that still just being wrapped up?
No, that's being wrapped up. We probably won't see that until your next meeting or possibly June meeting.
Okay, understand. All right, uh, on to number uh. Uh, before we do number, you know, number nine is next. Uh, this is action on the town hall, uh municipal roofing projects, Bill Library. Town Hall and Town Hall Annex. I actually got a phone call this afternoon or an email asking for a phone call from Steve Maslin. As you know, the committee approved and to move forward with that. Uh, the work that had to be done right away in advance, which was some chimney work, if you recall, at Bill Library. Um, that part of the work was already, has already been done. Um, and he expects that he's gonna begin to start processing um uh, you know, invoices for this work. As it progresses along through the P M B C. So Lisa, we should start seeing those coming from Steve Maslin. Um, here shortly. Um, the scope of that project doesn't have anyone from, you know, Town Hall assigned to the committee. We just handle that as uh. Uh, this is not a major, major project. We just handle it within the committee. So that's the uh, the only update we have there is the chimney work that had to be done to remove the uh, the extra chimney. It was no longer being used to the library. That work was done so that we can proceed on with the uh, the rest. Also, he also informed me that the town, uh, you know, again, we're trying to do this, you know, it's it's all town money and everything in the end. Is that his team at Public Works has self-performed, so to speak, or they just performed. Um, they did rent a couple of scissor lifts to be able to get up on the roofs to be able to remove the. Uh, existing solar panels and store them as directed by the mayor, um, so that the roof work can continue. We did not include removing of those panels in the bids that went out, so uh, because we're gonna repurpose those if we can or reuse them or sell them. Um, so that's progressing along. We'll see the invoices for those lifts uh probably at our next regular meeting. Uh, Steve Maslin also indicated that um if we need him to chime in. Um, I don't think we do at this point. Maybe toward the end of the project, he can tell us how things went. So there's no questions on that. Uh, just looking at my list here. All right, next we have um. The Highlands wastewater treatment plant at our last regular meeting, George Jose. Um, you put your hand up and said, I'll contact the um uh the authority on that to see where they're at. Uh, do you have anything to share with us?
Uh, not a lot, but yes, I did speak with Steve Banks and um. The the short answer, what I got was that the construction aspect of the project, they received no bids for it. So he's working on how to get it done with local people. And he's gonna schedule a meeting probably first week of May that I'll be invited to to get a little more of the the detail.
That is interesting that we're getting uh no bids. Um, the um, and I don't know if that's something that's going on in the industry now where there's just uh. Whether it's pent up demand or it was just a lack of a workforce, but um, you know, it's not a huge project and maybe people are just taking the big projects. But um, please fill us in at each meeting as you go along. Um, that's one of those projects that we kind of expect the W P C A to kind of manage on their own, which they usually do. Um, and the council just asked us to kind of maintain some oversight and watching it. All right, thank you. Uh, so let uh just shoot us all an email once you know a little bit more there, please, George.
Yes, will do.
Uh, item eleven here, uh, uh roof and solar projects at the uh Galesbury School, Juliette W. Long School and Central Office. Um, I I do know, uh, Wayne, I don't think we have anything more on that. At our last meeting, you had mentioned that we don't see this work being done until the following year because of the state approval process.
Correct.
Um, we're still right there, correct?
Yeah, the only thing that has changed, if anything, is that the uh finance director has asked me some kind of uh timeframe on the allotment of funds. And I told him that we expect to probably have uh architectural fees or something in the late summer or early fall. That'll be coming through on this project, but the main construction won't be starting in next June.
So our first R F P or anything that will go out will be for um design services for those roofs, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, uh.
Now, one other thing that's not related to the roofs, uh, but. You guys need to be aware of is that I am getting no responses from uh state facilities. Um, school facilities, they uh, they have to set up the closeout on projects. And I have the asbestos projects, I have the Gallup, uh, the middle school project. Which I've been trying to close out and I have reached out to Michelle Dixon at least four times and I've received no responses from her.
Yeah, they they re- they reorganized, I know that, and they changed who they worked for, but I thought their office stayed intact. I also know that there's a great deal of investigations and things ongoing in that office. So it is possible that they are consumed with, you know, FOIA requests and requests for information from. People that are doing the investigations, that's very possible. Um, just continue to to bang away at them. And if you continue to have this problem, please let the um uh superintendent, the mayor know so that they can approach our. Uh, you know, elected officials, uh, both, you know, Senator Austin, Representative France, uh, and and Representative um.
Conley.
Conley, sorry, Christine Conley, picturing her face in my mind, uh, and ask the three of them to help, um, you know, check into it. Uh, because that's what we elected them to do, so the three of them should be um, and you know what? If we have to do it quick because after the election, we're gonna have redistrict all over the place, but then we're gonna have three state reps that we can get to help us out. So maybe that'll be good for the town in some ways. So uh, let's uh, let's see what we can get done there.
Okay.
All right, uh, just go back to my agenda here. All right, uh, just one other item, um, and this one's. Uh, as you know, at our, I think it was the February meeting, I have to go back and look at the minutes, but we approved for the uh. Release of an R F P for audit services for our two school projects. And um, you know, that went out through the normal process. It was posted to the state. We advertised it in the uh, in the newspaper. We actually mailed it directly to some of the companies in addition that we knew. One of them was Crick. Um, the Capital Region Educational Consortium or something like that. Um, and they opened the bids on the thirty first of March per the schedule. Um, and we had two submissions that were, I asked Lisa to forward on to you. Um, one was from Colliers. And the other was from the education consultants and research. And the other was from the Education Consultants and Research Group. Um and I uh just the committee here, I kind of look for head nods here, I'm looking at your faces up here. Uh you all got that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and uh with, now first of all, we want to receive two um submissions. And looking at those two submissions, um the the one from Colliers um was actually signed out by a. Uh by someone who's a local apparently in the area and. Uh their submission, you know, went through it, it looks like they're, you know, they're well qualified to do the work, et cetera. Their submission was for sixty-four thousand dollars, essentially thirty-two thousand per. Project, you know, there are some, you know, a few assumptions in there, but uh it is um. As requested, all-inclusive, um including mileage, tolls, parking and sustenance. Um. There is escalation if we go beyond twenty-twenty-two at no fault of theirs. Um and their estimate was that it was gonna be about a hundred and fifty-six hours of uh of time per project. Uh that works out to a little over, I think, two hundred dollars an hour, which is reasonable for the services we're asking for. Uh fully burdened at sixty-four thousand dollars. Uh we also received another um. Proposal from Education Consultants and Research Group down in uh. Looks like Media, Pennsylvania, I had to read it a couple of times, uh down in Media, Pennsylvania, and that was submitted as well. I had a little bit harder time following this particular, what they were saying they were going to do. But in the end, their.
They're gonna charge us a lot of money, Steve, that's what they were gonna do.
Yeah, uh yes, they were. Uh what's interesting though is I looked at their their total estimation of man-hours was five hundred and fifty. So it wasn't too far off, you know, dramatically from the other bid. When I added up the number of hours in their milestones and reporting, you know, I could see where they were putting the hours. But they were asking for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now. When I first looked at it, I said, oh, that's a typo. But then I realized that it, they spelled it out in addition. Um and they did not submit the bid sheet like the town asked for in the R F P. Um but nonetheless, they still gave us a bid and they referenced the project, so it's it's a valid bid. But we only received two bids, so at this point here, we would um need to request a bid waiver from the town. Uh in order to uh. This, this is being done with money. Uh it's subject to our town purchasing rules. Uh. We may or may not get a state reimbursement on this, I'm gonna ask for it, I'm gonna submit it for reimbursement, so we wanna uh meet those requirements the best we can as well. But I think sixty-five thousand dollars is about, it's pretty close to what I thought this was gonna cost, um just kind of looking at it. Um based on the, you know, the level of effort and the other one is clearly just um. I don't know what to say on it, just it's ridiculously expensive. Um so with that, um what I would like to do is to get concurrence from the committee. Um and I'll make a motion here to request a bid waiver so that we could award that to Colliers. Um before I even make the motion, is there any questions or discussion? I agree with you, George, the six fifty is a little high. Um I added up the the cost per hour on that and it's it's a lot of money. It's like two thousand bucks an hour.
It was, it was something like twelve hundred dollars an hour, which unless you're being defended in court against a murder charge, you don't need to be spending that kind of money per hour.
Or we're all in the wrong business.
Um clearly.
All right, any, anyone on the committee have any questions on that?
Steve, just so you know, I had reached out to Colliers, because I know they do that kind of work.
Okay, and well, they gave us a good bid. Uh that's right, exactly, pretty much what I thought it was gonna be, two hundred dollars an hour fully burdened for the. People that are used to dealing with that is i- i- is reasonable for overhead like in a company like that, so does anyone have any uh? Comments before I make a motion on this? All right, so the motion right now is not to award a contract, the motion is to uh request a bid waiver to be able to award the contract. Um and I guess the the question I have here for the committee or someone can weigh in is. Do we, I think we could do it in one motion to rec- um request the bid waiver and when the bid waiver is awarded. Um uh recommended the mayor to make the award. So I think we can do that as one uh as one motion. If the town council, fi- if finance and town council has approved the bid waiver, then that. It dies on the line where it's at. So with that, that I I move that we request a bid waiver from finance and town council to be able to award the. Uh audit preparation uh contract to um to Colliers and once the bid waiver is awarded that. Um that that purchase order be let and the mayor would issue a contract.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Tominski, is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh. All in favor of approving the motion, say by saying your name and I, Steve Justwood's eye.
Your Tomisky, I.
Kate Tappamaherb, I.
Steve Munger, I.
George Josie, I.
Okay, with that, the eyes have it and that is approved. All right, uh so before we go here, um unless anyone has any new business to bring in front of the committee. Uh looking at the calendar, assuming that Dan can get that back to us in a couple of days and Steve, you can get it turned around. Um I'm just making sure we don't have any like, uh let's see. The eleventh is not a holiday. Um is there anyone in the committee that cannot support the eleventh at five thirty for a very quick meeting?
Is that a Monday?
That's a Monday.
Yeah, as long as it's that early, yeah.
Um so the only thing I have coming up, uh next week, we're supposed to have a negotiations committee meeting. Um they haven't settled on a date, it's just a meeting with our attorney, so um. If it does end up being the same day, I think I can just juggle for that quick meeting. Um but let me know is, are we gonna decide right now, you think?
Yeah, I'd like to just go ahead and if we have concurrence and Dan, you're comfortable, you can get it back to us. Steve June indicated it'd be quick. Then we'll have that meeting on the eleventh of April and uh and Wayne, you've got one other item to get to us for that.
I'll get it to you.
For that meeting and just get all Lisa uh by Thursday of this week to get on the agenda for the eleventh.
Yep.
Okay, and Steve, you think that'll be just a a quick couple of votes?
It's gonna be a special meeting, we're gonna vote on those three change orders, we're gonna vote on what uh Dan's got coming on the curtains. Uh. Wait, Dan. I mean, Wayne, Wayne. Wayne. Uh Wayne, you were gonna give us the one item on the uh. Excuse me, was it on the hoods?
I was gonna give you the information on the renovation of the wooden metal shop.
Right, the hoods, okay, got it, yeah. Uh so if you get that package to us as well, we can be able to vote on that on the eleventh as well. That's all we're gonna do that day and then our next regular meeting will be in May and I believe it is on the second of May.
Okay, yeah, so I should be able to manage a a quick meeting with you guys, even if it's the same night as negotiations.
Yeah, and again, Dan, even if uh Hessler, I see your face is still there. You submit those up, if you get all that application, everything back to us uh for, we have the change orders to do. And then uh that's all we're gonna vote on then and you'll get the application to us for our May meeting, correct? I'm sorry, the the final payment.
That's correct.
Excellent, all right, that'll work well. All right, with that, is there any other?
Yeah, I do. On the May second meeting, so I don't know if you saw on. Um Roxanne sent out an email to the committee and commissions a couple of weeks ago, but anyway, the governor's orders for remote. Um meetings expires on April thirtieth. Chris, can you get the cap? Expires on April thirtieth. So we can, we can't do remote-only Zoom meetings, you can do in-person or hybrid. So if we go back to in-person, going back to the Board of Ed, we can't do hybrid because we don't have the equipment there.
All right, so let's just uh that where can we do a meeting that would allow us to do hybrid? Uh.
The only place it's set up, but I don't know if it's available because there's other Monday meetings, is the only place the town has is the Town Hall Annex.
Well, then why don't we, it's time to go back, why don't we just meet in May in person? It'll be our last time to see Dan and our last time to see uh Steve June. By the last time in regular meetings at least.
Okay.
So let's, if that's the governor's order, then on May second, we'll plan on being, and the question is, we haven't had a room in a long, long time. Um in our standard meeting place had been the uh Board of Ed uh conference room, I believe that's still our. Our primary.
Problem.
Is that still there? Is that still available?
Yeah, just the roof just leaks.
Yeah.
How long has it been?
It's been two years.
It's twenty twenty.
Now, Lisa, do you have um? The, you can remotely record, correct? The meetings?
What do you mean?
I mean, if we meet there, you can record if we do a hybrid because we do have. The capability to do that, because we do it all the time there.
There is something, I don't know, the only, in that email, the only place is because they have that owl system. Is at the annex and there's a whole thing about how many. Um they put a uh policy in place of how many regular members have to be present. So.
I do, I do remember the email now and I remember asking about the owl system at that point. I would also think we're gonna be back in a session, so let's just, let's just plan on May being back of all the governor's orders back in person. Um and um it'll be a while since we've all seen each other.
And keeping it at five thirty, correct?
It's still five thirty.
So five thirty.
Unless we need to move that because a member of the committee, Steve Munger, I think you were the most time crunched. Kate, you had problems at five P M, but now five thirty, I think is better for you, right?
Yeah, five thirty is much easier for me.
Steve, can you support that?
I could probably just make it.
Okay, don't speed on one seventeen, all right? All right, so uh with that, we're gonna have a special meeting uh a week from today at five thirty online and then we'll shift to um in-person meetings starting on May fourth.
Second.
All right, I don't know if I have to vote for that because that's our normal. Um we 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 had to go the other way for a while, so I think we're good, we don't have to do any voting because it's our standard. We we picked our our meeting at the beginning of the year, that was our standard, so we're.
Right, but it's May second, not May fourth.
That's May fourth, my apologies. May second.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
Just on another topic really quickly, tracing back, there was discussion in last uh two weeks ago's town council meeting to. Uh broaden the scope of the Bill Library and Town Hall Roofing Projects.
Uh I have not received any additional um anything yet from uh from the town council on direction or any additional funds. Um so.
They're not adding funds, just adding scope.
Right, well, that because, that, the good news on that is that. When there are a lot of a certain amount of money and we get the bids back and it and it tends to come under, there's always a um. Uh you know, people want to say, hey, we have money, let's go do this, this and this. And sometimes those things aren't always well thought out, I don't know the particulars, I won't say that they're not. But if the town council adds some scope, um and we get a email or a letter from the chairman of the town council, speaking on behalf of the council, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, yeah, it's it's in the minutes of the last council meeting, there was discussion and they added several items that they would like to see done.
Right, and just let me clarify, that's a little bit different than in situ scope, in other words, they rip off something on the roof and they see something that's that they're. We're right then and there, someone has to make a decision, hey, let's spend the extra five hundred dollars here to put in. Flashing that wasn't called to be replaced, that's a different situation, you know, those, I I trust that Steve Maslin's making those kinds of decisions on the fly. Um and just filling us in because it's very time sensitive while they have something ripped apart, but. Significant increases in scope, we should be getting direction from the council. Because it's better to just finish projects under budget. In my opinion, as taxpayer.
Yeah, yeah, they did add a few things, but if you haven't received any note from them on it yet, I don't.
Nothing.
I don't know what we do with that, so.
Nothing yet. All right, uh with that, is there any other new business uh or anything to be brought in front of the committee? Hearing none, I move adjourned.
Second.
I don't see any dissent out there, so the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, have a great night.
Good night.
Bye.
Thank you.